This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, right to that, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Line Board for Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. We're all in person except for Harry who is remote and we are recording. First up, is there anyone who would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Alright, moving right along. No minutes or any hours, are you like? Nope, alright. So first up is a continued public hearing for CHD for a plan approved under Section 12.9 at 5669 Union Street. Give us an update on where we are.
I would be happy to. For the record, my name is Kevin Wendell, project manager with consulting engineering from Brunnell-Lajutis. Here representing the applicant. With me this evening is also members of CHD as well as Associated Builders and the project architect as well to answer any specific questions that I defer to them. So.
Uncomfortable pause.
I'm sorry, I think what happened was I forwarded, you know, you sent me the attachment and it didn't come through to this unit. Which I, um...
You have a phone card, I can see that.
Kevin's for a throw down.
I was just, I'm meeting on government junkyard. Fantastic. Awkward pause, I've heard it. Alright, from the last time, exactly a month ago, be it February 7th, was the last time we were here before you. When we left that meeting.
There we go.
Alright. One month ago, we left that, uh, that meeting with the, I intended to meet with the abutting property owners and also address some minor items that were still outstanding with the city engineering. So I will say subsequent to that meeting, myself and members of CHD met with property owners, specifically those owners at 8 Chapman and 10 Chapman, addressed the, or reviewed the concerns that were brought up at that meeting. Those concerns are outlined in the memo to staff that was submitted as part of our revised application. Specifically, the items, and I can go through those very briefly.
Yeah, let's do that because we've all had it, but the public hearing and all blind items, so.
Absolutely helpful, thank you. In that letter, there were 11 items specifically referenced. The first item, request is made to maintain dust control throughout construction. Contractor will make all efforts to minimize disturbed areas on site and apply dust control measures throughout the construction period. That was reviewed with the abutting property owners as well as contractor and owner. Really the intent there is to address any or minimize any open disturbed areas and then apply dust control measures being predominantly water to make sure the dust gets down during those active construction times. We all recognize that the faster the site gets constructed and closed in and stabilized, the quicker that dust will subside. So really that becomes the intent throughout this process, is to minimize those disturbed areas. Recognizing right now the demolition has been concluded, so there's quite a bit of, of disturbance out there as we speak today. Item number two, request is made to install construction, install construction fencing. As you will notice on site, currently, construction fencing is up around the perimeter of the site. That was done as indicated as soon as the demolition activities will complete. So that fencing is now up. Item number three, request was made, proceeds to impair management plan addressing items such as emergency response, after hours operations and security system protocols. That operations plan was submitted as part of the, uh, the revised application package. I can go through that in as much detail as needed. But again, we reviewed those items with the abutting property owners as well. In regards to, you know, security systems and after hours procedures as far as, you know, emergency services and that and so on. Item number four, request made by the abutting property owner at the 2 and 4 Chapman to increase the fence height. That was a discussion we had in front of the board last month, effectively extending that height from the five foot that we had originally intended to an eight foot fence. And that eight foot fence is now shown on the revised plans. That becomes a very comfortable position for CHD to say that taller fence will provide additional screening to that property owner. Specific, that fence runs on the 4, 6 and 8 Chapman, effectively from the building that's remaining out to the access out on the Chapman from the site. Second page, item number five, on further investigation of boundary between 65 Union and 2 and 4 Chapman. At 6 Chapman, project team feels a minor retaining wall, zero to two feet in overall height obligated. That is effectively constructibility now that the building is down, with a better opportunity to observe the grade change on that along that property line. Again, a very minor low wall, you know, and that would be constructive in parallel with the eight foot fence. To again, address the ethereal access to the sidewalk that we show as well providing, you know, horizontal space to allow that eight foot fence to be constructive. Little minor item but worth noting since it is shown on the revised plan. Item number six, the existing chain link gate on the northern side of the property separating CHD group 6 and 8 Chapman will be replaced and will remain closed. That was a conversation that we had in public last month. In regards to having the opportunity to have a discussion with the fire department, making sure that by us saying that gate was going to remain closed, there wasn't going to be an issue with public safety as far as the fire, uh, fire department is concerned. That conversation has been had. I have spoken with Dan Constantine, fire captain. She was very comfortable with that being, that gate remaining closed at all times. And that gate will now be blocked with a conversation again, Dan and I was, it'll be an East Hampton block configuration so that the fire department can still gain access if need be. But again, kind of closing the loop on that item, CHD is very comfortable with that gate now being closed at all times. So we hope that mitigates the concerns of the Chapman Street abutters that we will not maybe provide access to Chapman for employees and visitors. Furthermore, that gate, as it exists, will, will be replaced in kind. So it will be a chain link gate, but it will be new. It won't be across the gate that's out there. New chain link gate, so it'll be consistent with the new construction across the site. But again, that will remain locked at all times, the fire department only being the ones that have access. Continuing on, item number seven, a photometric plan is requested. That is now included in the revised application package. That photometric plan does indicate the zero foot handles specifically at the 10 Chapman at the rear property line. And then along with that photometric plan, there was some slight modifications of pole locations to try and best fit the pole locations to make sure we're minimizing life spillovers at the property line. So again, slight change in poles, but again, that photometric plan as, as requested has been submitted. So, item number eight, initially the plan had indicated 15 foot tall Mokwe Nolda Bidee screening along the back corner of the center of the right on the screen. Specifically, the 8 and the 10 Chapman, we had lengthy conversations with the owners of 10 Chapman. In regards to their request to lower that overall screen. Again, we discussed that in the field with them. What we're now showing is keeping it everything but changing the species from an old Bidee to a Rota Dendrum, allowing Rota Dendrum so that it was, at their request, we felt it was very reasonable for us to say it's still tall enough by, you know, screening of headlights and use, but, you know, a, a, a much more attractive plan to do for that screening on that corner. So, going on to item, um, excuse me, item number nine. Request was made by the city engineer to determine whether it was feasible to add additional best management practices and low impact development measures into the design. And furthermore, there was conversation about pervious piping within the storm, storm drain system. And subsequent to that meeting on the 7th, we went out there and performed deep pole soil testing. Collected soil samples, had them tested for permeability rates at, at a laboratory. And then based upon those permeability rates submitted, our findings to the city engineer indicating that there's 120 feet now of that underground storage pipe that will be perforated. And we've also gone from a 10 inch pipe to an 18 inch pipe to increase the storage within that, within that pipe. Based upon myself, based upon conversations with myself and Dan and my people. What we believe that leads towards is the ability for us to say that there is reduction or additional reduction of phosphorus from what we had previously stipulated. We were previously relying on the reduced impasse areas to account for the reduction in phosphorus. We're now taking advantage of the soil conditions that allows the permeability slithration, so additional immovable phosphorus to the site. So that, that speaks to item number nine. And specifically between sections 2 and 3, on the bottom of the plan, it's the long pipe run in the bottom corner of that plan. Within the parking area, again, it was 120 feet of 10 inch pipe is what we needed for capacity. But optimizing that confrontation as effectively now a stone trench with a current type net. Item number 10, request made to have loud construction activities start later than 7:00 AM. That was a conversation he had with the abutters at 10 Chapman. We'll make all good paid efforts to make sure that the loudest or most nuisance construction related items start after an 8:00 AM time period. Recognizing there are a lot of moving parts during the construction process. Again, we'll go on record and say, well, you know, a best, a good faith effort, our best attempt to effectively maintain, you know, normal working hours, be it recognizing that construction usually starts before most people are are used to seeing work start. So that was a conversation with those abutters again. Recognizing, you know, an early start is not preferred. Again, we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that the the, the most effective noises start after 8:00 AM. And last item, item number, item number 11, excuse me, request made for the property owner at 10 Chapman to divert stormwater runoff away from their property. We did make some fine grading tweaks to effectively, by description where the Rota Dendrons are, everything inbound of the site or where those Rota Dendrons are, will defer divert water away from their property. So there's only a six or eight foot buffer strip where the plantings will be. Where that grading will not change from the slope that's currently there today. There is a minor amount of water that falls in that area that will shed to their property. But everything else will be maintained on our site and no great changes within that area will be made. That will divert additional water or, or water of higher velocity if you will, less deeper slopes within that area. So we will need a good faith effort again to divert all that water in the green space on that right back into our system and, and discharge offsite. So with that, that is all 11 items specifically. But again, other members of the team here, anything specific? But I believe that was everything we had talked about. You had asked us to, to leave and go, you know, go introduce ourselves to the neighbors. We did. We have a good understanding of what the owners of 10 Chapman indicated they wanted. We met that. And specifically, I think now that we have a conversation or have had a conversation with the fire department, we're on very, very firm ground in the understanding that that eight foot will be closed, so there will be no, no increase in traffic out on the Chapman. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks Kevin. Any further questions, Alex?
I just want to say that when I read that, I found it to be a model of a good response. In terms of being a good neighbor, communicating. Everything I recall having been discussed in the original meeting, I read it, was touched upon. I'm eager to hear from the abutters to, to see how they feel about it, but from what I see so far, that's what a good neighbor is. That's a very responsible, hopeful, yes. Alright, let's maintain that relationship with the others.
Yeah, I concur. You guys did a great job responding.
Chris? I have a question. So I, um, I was walking by there this morning and I noticed, I didn't realize before, there's a mural on the backside of the building. It doesn't look like it's very well maintained. I don't know who maintains it, whether it's the city or if it's an organization. But are you planning to keep or improve the mural? Or are you planning to paint over it? What's the plan of?
I know we are, I'm Ben Craft from CHD.
Oh Ben, can I just have you go through my?
Yeah, sure.
People I want to.
Sure, of course. So Ben Craft, Vice President of Community Engagement for CHD. I know the current mural is not in great shape. I can tell you, and I don't know exactly what the plan is for that. We can figure that out. But I will tell you that we already commenced some discussions with a local artist on doing something new with the new building. You know, we're not quite far enough along on that yet. Obviously, that has to follow the construction project and work with that, but a member of my team has connected with a local artist and she's met with her once already to talk her out of it. Put in place and reflect the values of CHD and the community.
Okay. Do you have any idea where, who, who maintains it?
I don't know, it's out of my head. I'd be happy to, happy to get it to you.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be interesting to see if it's a, it's a group within the city that wants to.
I think she's, I want to say, I don't hope you on this, but I want to say she's an East Hampton.
Any other questions by board members? Harry, any questions?
No.
Alright. Uh, any members from the public or abutters or otherwise want to chime in and let us know what's going on?
Hi, I'm Alex Cassell from 8 Chapman Avenue. We have the driveway at CHD. We're discussing with the gate. I'm happy that we're able to come up with a solution where the gate will stay closed. I'm very happy about that. The one real concern we have was about snow removal and there's been discussion back and forth between their lawyer, Felicity, and our lawyer as well as us about the snow. What CHD did was they, they offered a license to put snow there. But the license can be revoked for any cause at any time. So it doesn't really give us much protection and that was more a big concern given because the past 23 years, we've always put snow there. You know, with the hardware store. So we're hoping for something a little more permanent than a license that could be revoked at whim. Other than that, we're, we're very happy with, I mean, I know CHD is, I know that Ben brought up the, the cost to the gates. We'd be happy if they left it as is. That's up to them if they were replacing. We're not asking them to spend a lot of money. But we just want, you know, pretty much to use the same as it is. Which having the gate closed will accomplish most of that. The only very minor thing was as far as the Rota Bidee, we're happy with the Rota Dendrum. But really number 10 wanted the shorter plans. If you decided you wanted to put taller plans along our fence, that's okay. At this point, I'm going to need to modify it. It's very vulgar motion, very minor points.
So, we remind you again, I think you historically have stored snow on that driveway, is that right, by the gate?
We have. So it, originally the driveway was just for 8 Chapman. And then the hardware store bought it and they wanted to get traffic through the trucks which couldn't make the turns. They didn't really use it. We, in agreement with the hardware store, to put snow against the gate. The driveway is tight on one side, our house tight on the other to our neighbor's house number 6. So the only place you can really push snow is up to the gates, which, you know, for 23 years, we've been doing that and it hasn't damaged the gates. We have contracted this removal, but it, it hasn't been an issue. It's just wanting to protect the ability to put snow there in the future. I take them at their word with the license that they want to allow to put snow there. It's not someone I think that are going to revoke it tomorrow unless they get approval. It's more if they have a new manager, or if they decide to move the facility back to the tech, going forward. I was going to have to worry about this same issue, you know, again.
Okay. And any other concerns that you have or is that?
Well, it's a big concern. We just got, you know, I just got to go to the, um, off my lawyer this morning. Finally got some language handy and seen what, what the language was. We have a whole lot of time to, or we were kind of waiting to hear what, because they closed license a while ago. We met in person. We, we saw the language or specifics of that. I did ask about, that was, that was. I asked about the nature of the gates. They don't have specifics as to exact specifications of the gate at this time, which I understand. But then from CHD, he did say that it would be of the same type and nature. So it would not be a cheap garden gate that would collapse and for us snowfall when the portafilm touched it. And that would not allow pedestrian traffic. So one of our concerns, we're hoping with the traffic, both vehicles and pedestrians. They, they agree with the gate with, you know, the same nature, probably chain wreak still, but of, you know, substance, so we're not sale, you know. So that was the, really our silver lining from that issue.
Any comment from CHD on the sort of revocable license issue? Quick question.
I'm sorry, just to clear up the gate, is it what you're proposing for the gate, what's presented on the plans on that last detail sheet?
That, that is correct. The, the, the last note on that detail says the gate will be replaced in kind in the same nature of the current gate in commercial industrial nature. Recognizing we've not specified the gate yet, but in hopes that comment would address the concern that there would not be a lesser gate installed.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Just to clarify.
You can do that, but.
Yeah, that is on the plan. That will not be.
Okay, we, we have now seen the plan, the regulations, who can know. Could we prove the screen?
Yes.
It's on, it's in the set, isn't it?
Yeah, so.
Maybe Kevin.
Yeah, I've got it. I'm, I'm sorry, I can, I can pull it up now.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, so that is the gate that we're proposing with some revised plans. Note number three, indication proposed gate to be installed shall match existing gate height, width, span and structural integrity. All components of the new gate syst, gate system shall be heavy duty in nature and design for commercial application.
One last question. Since it's a single swing and gate, do you have the, is it going to swing in towards the property or out towards Chapman?
Due to the grade on that, on, on that access drive and grade on site, it will swing into the site. As the current gate does, the, the, the grade on that access drive prevents the gate from swinging out.
Great, okay.
So how about the snow removal? Are you, any comments on that, Attorney Hardy?
Good evening. My name's Felicity Hardy. I'm the General Counsel for Center for Human Development. So the asshole's lawyer and I are in active discussion about that. Snow storage isn't, um, isn't anticipated or contemplated in the existing easement. So in order for us to come to an agreement about that, we have to have a separate document. And I can just say, Mr. Melnick and I are exchanging ideas about, about that. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Sure. Yeah, I mean. So, and question on Robin, my understanding is that, that the license offered could be revoked at any moment. And it wasn't oversight in the easement 23 years ago that nothing was written about snow, but that's been a sustained condition. CHD, particularly Felicity, asked that we restate the existing easements. And I think if we want to restate the existing easements, we could easily put a sentence in just allowing snow storage. We're not asking for whole lots. It's the existing condition that's been, you know, this is, it's been, I understand between us and the previous owners. But if we're rewriting the language anyway to restate the existing easements, I don't see the arm and putting a sentence saying so sort will be allowed. In forward as opposed to a license which could be removed by anyone at any time. Would like that be addressed.
I'm not sure that's like really in our scope here, right?
I mean, I think it's a property dispute between you folks and I, I don't think that we can really put a thumb on the scale.
And I think it's not sort of public safety and, and general things we have contemplated, especially if the gate is locked and it's not going to be used. I don't know what the fire department thinks about snow being put there. I don't know what rights you have, you might have now that you've been doing this for 23 years. I don't know what the language in the easement is. I think all of that probably has to be worked out between you folks. And it seems like you guys are moving in the right direction and I'm hoping that that is the case. Personally, I feel like it's kind of outside of our.
I can hold it there. Yeah, it seems to be more like a legal situation than a, a board situation, but I'm not sure. I'm not really a lawyer, so I don't know how that works.
Yeah, alright. So maybe it seems, not that I actually, it's just fate that they would stop us from dropping snow there. But more of future use than things that would be very hard to use the existing parking area. So I think planning would have an interest in that. I mean, if you can't park up the streets and snow emergencies, and that's really where it's going to matter, is whether it's snow.
Right.
So it kind of changes the use of our property if we get out the snow there, because there is no other place to put it.
Yeah, and I'm trying really hard not to operate in legal opinions, but I think like you guys have an easement, right? You have a property interest in that parcel, that section, and they own the fee in it. And I think like that's kind of, sort of got with us on that mountain, the road or whatever it was by the Serenac Place. Like I think, I think because it's not on the, the actual site that's being operated, I don't see that it falls under our site plan considerations the same way. That would have honestly, even if that gate was going to be open and be used as ingress or egress, but I'm not sure we can really insert ourselves into that issue.
And others that continue to encourage people to cooperate. Yeah, I mean, we've come pretty far before we started.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I do.
So my understanding is you've got a license kind of agreed upon and you're, I think your real hangup is a revocation of that license for unknown means. And maybe if the means were just simply defined, you would know which rules. Everybody knows the rules each other are applying by and you'd feel comfortable. Is that what I'm gathering?
I guess I don't understand how you're phrasing it, but it's mostly, you know, like what I stated, that we, we don't really want to use the change. Having the gate closed is, is most of it. And, you know, the, the license would allow us at least for the time being to deposit snow, which certainly is a step in the right direction. But again, it's just time to protect future use or, you know, like it's, if they get a manager who decides they do want to use the gates, there isn't anything saying that they cannot use the gates. They're going to retain that right, so they could open the gates and then say you cannot put snow. And then suddenly you have their approval, but.
Well, I think with this special permit we're talking about, it's in accordance with the plans and the application which has the gate now locked except by a knock box. So I would say that they, again, they're not getting any advice. I would suggest that they probably need to come get a modification or see if it's a material change before they open that and use it as an entryway or an exit.
But, yeah, I mean, certainly.
I mean, I think that, that's, that's how I would assume a special permit like this would be treated, is that that is part of the plans and any deviation from the plans requires either a modification or our determination that it is not a material change. So can't prejudge any of that, but it sure seems like that is a legitimate here, one of the issues. And I would think that that's kind of essential to the special permit. But to echo what James said before, now I've been hearing from you folks like, you send people away a lot to solve problems and it's always great when like 95% of them it sounds like got solved and like we shouldn't be the ones, you know, splitting the baby. Appreciate that you guys sat down and cut it off. But I think that also bodes well for future discussions, hopefully, technically. Good neighbor. Alright, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public or online? All right. Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions from the public or online?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for working with everybody. That was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have a draft decision. I assume C H D folks have seen this in advance, the draft that we have, or that it might have been the last minute.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, I'm now going to do my public reading portion of the draft decision, uh, with respect to our findings and conditions. I think we've encapsulated this draft, but, um, I am a member of the state, I would disagree with any of these stated findings made by the board. Um, so, uh, first finding conforms with the provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations for state and federal agencies. Finding states, the board finds this application is in compliance with laws of Massachusetts and applicable state and federal agencies. The protection of city amenities and abiding properties and the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural scenic or historic features on the site. Board finds the application was reviewed by the historical commission, which determined that the existing buildings were not of historic significance unless the application was not arming any natural scenic or historic resources. Finding board finds the application was self-creating cameras and available to respond to concerns seven days. C, movements in safety and vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relationship to adjoining ways of properties, board finds the design of the parking lot allows for safe movement of vehicles and pedestrians, that the shared driveway connecting to Chapman Avenue will be gated and have a knock box that can be used by emergency services. D, adequacy of the methods disclosed on sewer and refuse, have the drainage of surface and subsurface water. The board finds the site will be connected to updated sewer on Union Street and has worked with the Department of Public Works on coordinating and construction with Union Street improvements. Board also finds the stormwater treatment measures are adequate and have been reviewed by the city at the time. E, adequate means of protecting wetlands, water sheds, or personal well areas, board finds this is not applicable to the application. F, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effects on the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection and streets. Board finds that the applicant has worked with the Department of Public Works on coordinating sections, water and sewage, and that the use will not have a detrimental impact on the city's resources. G, provision for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles, incidental cooperation with the establishment, parking, lighting and internal traffic control. Board finds the site design has adequate space for parking and a small amount of unload required for reuse. The board finds the applicant has submitted a formal metroplan that shows adequate lighting of the site without being a nuisance to neighbors. H, applicant's efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetation puffers and retention of open space for agriculture land. Board finds the site plan includes landscape features, including street trees and screening, and has accommodated neighbors' requests for appropriate screening, including eight foot flats adjacent to two or four Chapman Avenue and six foot road entrances adjacent to eight and ten Chappell. I, minimization of the area where which existing vegetation is to be removed or tree room work required, special attentions given in applying replacement trees. Board finds this application does not include significant removal of vegetation. And J, the consistency of development with respect to setback area, placement, parking, architectural style, landscaping of the surrounding buildings and developments. Board finds this application is in compliance with this ordinance. And there are two conditions in this draft. One is all exterior site improvements shall be constructed and maintained. Reports will be approved. Site plans prepared by Barton alone to do chief data January 17th, 2023, and revised February 21st, 2023. And two, the access to Chapman Avenue shall be gated and not used by C H D staff or clients. The gate will have a knock box that allows emergency act services to access the property. If there are any other conditions or things we need to fill for members, that looks appropriate to me. Any comments or questions about conditions, variables, findings?
Mention to approve the site plan approval for C H D.
Second batch. All right. Moving to approve site plan approval for C H D. All those in favor. All right. Eric, I'm going to get to that.
Hi.
Again, thank you, everyone. This was better.
All right, folks, we've got another item on the agenda, so we could take conversations outside. That would be fabulous. Folks, excuse me, we've got another item on the agenda, so we can just step outside. That'd be great. Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda, American Dream Realty LLC seeking to renew an existing special permit for drive-through restaurants, uh, at five and nine Key Street. So there's somebody here. I see Mr. Lebec on the line. Rob, are you running this show?
I'll do my best.
Okay. Um, handy on that, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry. But hold on, Danny is recusing himself.
I'm right. I can hear one of the partners with American Dream.
Okay. All right. Uh, Rob, you want to just explain to us what's been going on and what we're doing here today?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, so for the record, I'm Rob Lebec from our Lebec Associates. Uh, we have worked for American Dream Realty in conjunction with McMahon Associates. Uh, McMahon Associates was the traffic lead on the project. Um, just to bring you back a little bit, this is for a proposed Dunkin' Donuts. Um, you guys had approved the project a, a while back. We, uh, as a condition of the project, um, uh, one of the conditions of the project was that we move forward with the improvements, um, for the signalized intersection, um, just to the east of the subject property, um, or potentially signaling the intersection at the, at the, um, at, at that intersection. So we have done so. Uh, McMahon Associates filed with Mass D O T. Um, we had an outline, we have a, I have an outline that I can share from McMahon Associates that kind of described the process that we had gone through, as well as what we anticipate, uh, to getting to a point where we have, um, the installation of the, uh, intersection improvements. Um, if I could share my screen, I could probably show that. I'd probably be the easiest way to do that. We'll just try this. Have a window here. Okay. Um, I may or may not in a second be sharing a, um, a screen, my screen with McMahon Associates' letter to the planning board. Um, in the middle of the letter, you'll see that, um, first of all, can you see it? Folks, can you see it?
Yes.
Oh, great. Great. Uh, so in the middle of the letter, you'll see that there is a, um, kind of a description of what, uh, what the timeline was to get the, the work completed. So you'll see the 25% design submission was done, um, in April of 21. The 75% submission was in February of 22. Uh, mass D O T plan specs and estimate was submitted, um, in July of 22. Uh, the P S and E submission, um, was, uh, number two was, um, on 1022 or in 1022. Um, and then the last one was, uh, 12, 622. Um, and then the permit was issued by District Two as recent as February 3rd, 2023. So, um, we've also included a little bit of a table here, um, talked about, talks about what we anticipate, um, for the duration of getting to, you know, the intersection improvements, um, which is, I won't go in, uh, unless there's any questions, I won't get into any detail. Um, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have with regard to this process and where we stand now. I also have a copy of our original site plan, should you like to see it, as well as the, um, improvement plans that were designed by McMahon Associates and approved by Mass D O T.
Rob, can you hear us?
Um, I just heard somebody barely. Is anybody talking?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. The audio's, uh, I can just barely hear Jesse.
Can you hear this right in front of the microphone? Does that work?
Yeah, I can almost, I'm turning my end up, I think. Um.
So, so what I was saying is that I think it was completely expected by me at least that the mass C O T process, uh, could take longer and an extension might be required. Um, from my perspective, renewing and putting in fork is, uh, in no way warrants review of this. We voted on it and we're merely waiting on the one component that was likely to take longer. I know that there was a letter that came in, uh, uh, I forget my pronunciation, Denise Heintz, I believe it was, uh, asking questions about why we had this process, uh, as if we're sort of reviewing it all again. Uh, I recommend against the board doing that. And I think this is, this is definitely a situation where we vote on this already. This is an extension by a third agency, the mass D O T, uh, to do a, a piece of the, of the puzzle that we've already voted upon. Uh, so this is a.
Just to clarify what's going on to the public, um, and to the African, in my opinion. So the, the East Hampton bylaws, uh, as required by state law, we have an ordinance that, uh, has an expiration date of two years for a special permit if there hasn't been substantial performance. And the exception to that is if the delay is for good cause shown. So, um, I'm not even sure that we need a new special permit decision. Eli, I know we sort of lined it up that way. I mean, what I have envisioned, I think I've seen other people do is basically a vote of this board to extend it for another two years, um, assuming that there, that we agree that there's good cause shown. But I, our, our limited goal here, I think, is just whether there's a sufficient reason for the lack of progress over two years. And, um, I tend to agree with you, James, that, that the reason is specifically a condition that we imposed and we knew would take a long time. Um, so I don't know, Ken or Chris, if you guys disagree with that, but I don't think we're looking at the merits of the project at this point. It's literally just whether there's a good reason for the delay.
I a hundred percent agree with that. Um, I, I'm, so I'm looking at this letter from McMahon that, that, um, the applicant showed. Um, and, and it appears that, I mean, there has been good faith movement. The design is substantially complete. They're going to bids from contractors within the next month. Um, and, um, so, I mean, I think that there's been absolutely, uh, movement, especially with the state, which, um, takes a little longer than, I'm actually surprised at how fast it's going, to be honest, working with, with the D O T. So, um, I think that's, I'm comfortable with extending it.
So I, I, I do want to hear from the public, but I, I think we should limit the scopes or what people are talking about. It's not whether there should or should not be a special permit here. It's whether, um, they think there's not a good reason for the two-year delay, because that's, that's really what we're, the only thing we have before us today. So with that in mind, is there anybody who has any comments or questions, either in the room or online, on the issue of good cause for the delay? All right. Was there any, please, Billy, great.
We, we do have someone online too.
Oh, okay. Does somebody here want to?
Yeah.
Please come right up. Thank you.
I've got a question. Frank Pauli, 60th Street, right, right across the street from the coffee shop. But I'm 81 years old and my time is morning, 5 o'clock, but I'm in bed by 7 or 8 o'clock. So my question being, on the drive-through, how late is it going to stay open? That's the only question.
I don't remember when that was.
I'm trying to look at it.
They were sort of getting into the nuts and bolts of the application, but I don't think it's before us. But is there somebody from the applicant who can?
This guy here.
I have, I have the decision that we did last night.
It's a big decision.
It might not have the hours.
The drive-through we talked about, right? I hope it's not going to be like 9, 10 o'clock to drive it.
I mean.
A typical location, it's open 5 to 7 or the latest date.
And whatever it is, it was in the application which was approved. So that's, that's sort of what.
I didn't get the application. I didn't see it.
That's the decision, but the decision was based on an application and.
What time is it going to be closed?
So he said typically it would be, would you say 7 or 8, that it would close?
Yeah, the typical is toward a 7, uh, 5 to 7 or 5 to 8, depending on the location.
But again, whatever it is, is, it was part of the application that's already been made into.
Now, once we get any later ready.
No. There's someone else in the room that had a hand before we call online? No? Okay. Uh, I can't quite read that name. Eli, who's got the hand raised? It's, uh, Andrea Kinsel?
Yeah, it's me. It's David Kinsel, actually. It's something tied, tied in with my daughter's account. And so that's why, that's why I had to direct her to, I apologize for that. Anyway, I just want to express my, uh, gratitude to Manny and the Sardina family for continuing on with this project. I know they put a lot of, uh, stores up in different towns, some towns easier to deal with, maybe in different situations than other, but definitely, uh, excited to hear this can continue moving forward and that the Sardina family hasn't given up on doing business in East Hampton.
Thank you. Anything else online or in the room with comments or questions? Come on down, please.
I'm Beverly Kardika, and I live up the hill from where the project is going to happen.
And what's, what's the street address? Just for a minute?
So, Manski Avenue.
Okay. Good number.
Sorry, four, please. And my question still is questioning whether a light placed at that intersection, considering that there are two more lights just a mile away going into North Hampton is not going to create more traffic problems that we already have there.
We did a lengthy review of both air traffic expert and we forced the applicant to do a higher review for us to get a second company to look at it. And it was significantly better than the alternative. So it was, but again, we, we punked down this road, no pun intended, but, um, it, it certainly made all of that much safer, uh, to put a light there. And to be honest, as Chris said, I thought it would either take longer or the state would never agree to it, but they.
I was also wondering if this is already a done deal. I've even got postcards about the.
Well, because it's not a done deal, but the, but the issue here is not the substance of the application. It's about the reasonableness of the quote unquote delay, why it hasn't happened in two years. So special permits expire in East Hampton automatically after two years if you haven't done substantial completion, unless there's good cause shown. So you have to have a reasonable reason for why. In this case, we made it a mandatory condition in the special permit that they get a light installed by Mass D O T, which I can't imagine ever could have been done within two years. Um, so that is their reason for what the delay has been. As Chris said, they've done a lot of work to get that permit, which they have obtained now. Um, so it's not that it's a done deal. It's that this, this step in the process is about the reasonableness of the two-year delay. So that part is still open for debate and we still have to make a decision on that. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Comments or questions in the room or online? Planning board members have any comments or questions? Eric, comments or questions?
No.
So before we go, Eli, and Rob, maybe you could jump in on this if you could hear me, but I envision would just take the vote to extend the special permit for two years. But if you, if Eli, you or Rob thinks that a new special permit vote makes more sense for device and more security, find it in that, but.
I would, uh, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I would request that an extension be granted rather than a new special permit, if that's what the question was. I think I heard it correctly.
That was the question. Thank you. Eli, what are your thoughts?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I defer to you, but, uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, we're at the new decision, but essentially the language is to keep the conditions from the previous one, except for the one they already satisfied.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, the bylaw says it will expire except for good cause. So I envision a decision that we could draft that says, you know, that we find that there's good cause shown for the delay and we would extend the existing sure special permit with all conditions for further two years.
I wouldn't say two years yet, because it's going to take up to 20 months to.
It would not shock me one bit if they're back here again in two years, trying to get over the finish line, but I think they will probably reach substantial completion at that point where they're far enough along, but who knows?
And I don't think there's another automatic trigger that must be put that timeline in. So I think it is appropriate to.
so I think it is appropriate to specify.
I agree.
Yeah, I would say two more years.
Two years, I'm comfortable with.
This makes sense, Harry, any thoughts on that?
No.
I motion to extend the existing special permit for American Dream Realty for two years.
Okay, all right, voting to extend for two years, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you, too much for us to go on.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, and with that, I would extend the motion to Twitter. So moved. Voting Twitter, all those in favor? Great, can we see persons in charge?
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.